Welcome to the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, meeting of June 20th, 2017. Would you be kind enough to rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Steve, I'll put up the agenda here for the folks at home if they want to take a look at what we'll be discussing tonight. The order is going to change, I think, a little bit. Item number two, we have someone from DEC who will be joining us, a member of the Estuary Program to answer some questions, so that may happen a little later in the meeting. Okay, very good. Well, we will start this first meeting of the month, as we always do, with the supervisor's report. And I will read that to you. This is the monthly financial statement ending May 31st, 2017. We started the month with an opening balance of $6,51,418.6. We had receipts of $705,264.91. Disbursements of $699,105.71. That leaves us an ending balance of $6,47,577. And Anne Conway, our bookkeeper, has also included a few minor budget adjustments. Only a couple for contingent account. And we received some extreme weather monies from the state. EWR funds at home. Are there any questions about the supervisor's report? Harry, I know you always want to hear what we have in our CPF balance.
Yeah, you can't find it.
Well, it's often on the first page. The CM Community Preservation, see that line? That's nearly the last line on the first page.
On the first page?
CM Community Preservation 204.
Oh, yes, okay.
Right, so we have an ending balance of $808,331 in that account. So I would entertain a motion if there are no questions or further questions to approve the supervisor's report.
Sub move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. And for the budget adjustments as well, is there a motion to approve those?
Sub moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. It's time for the clerk's report. Sue McCann?
Town Clerk Monthly Report, May of 2017. Total local shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue, $1,590.46. Amount remitted to New York Ag and Markets for the Spade and Neuter Program, $46. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $180. Amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $359.04 for a total state, county, and local revenue of $2,175.50. Pursuant to Section 27, Sub 1 of the Town Manual, I hereby certify that foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk of the Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office. I also have two abstracts. One is from March of 2017. This is vouchers 21673 through 21759. These are the vouchers that were approved and processed for the month of March. And the total abstract was $428,611.30. And I hereby certify that the voucher numbers processed in the month of March are an accurate reporting of the abstract approved for payment by the Town Board. We also have Aprils, and this is vouchers 21760 through 21957, with a total abstract of $314,797.48. And I hereby certify that the vouchers processed in the month of April are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the Town Board. And that is it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Sue. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
Sub move.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Announcements, I just have a couple of quick announcements. One is to let the folks know at home, you've probably seen that the sidewalk project has begun on Route 9 South, that's on the eastern side, from Holy Cow up to Town Hall here. In fact, a few feet past Town Hall to include in front of Rhinebeck Savings Bank. The project will continue for the next couple of months, but you will see progress on a daily basis. They've already started to pour the curbs and portions of the sidewalk, and there will be replantings at the end. So if you have any questions, please feel free to come into Town Hall or give a call, and we'd be happy to give you any specifics that you need on the project. We also want to let you know this change in Town Hall hours. July 3rd, Monday, that's the day before Independence Day, we will be closed that day. So if you would like to get any type of permits, please see us on Friday or Wednesday after the holiday. Also would like to let you know that our recycling park, we now have recycling containers, rather, at our recreation park. And so we would greatly appreciate it if you would put your recycling materials, and only your recycling materials, in those cans, and we have weekly pickup for that. And we thank you in advance for doing your part to keep our community a responsible one. Okay. That's all I have for announcements. Does anybody else have anything?
I have a quick thing.
Sure.
I just wanted to give a shout out to the Duchess County Department of Transportation, or DPW, I guess it is. They did some brush clearing on the corner of Linden and Measlin for us recently in response to a resident request, and that was something that we forwarded through Bob Balkind, and they, I think we, the person complained about it one day, and it was done the next day. And so that was back in May, but this is my first meeting since that time, so I just wanted to let them know that we really appreciate how quickly they addressed that issue, and let the residents know that if you do see things that you are concerned about, we'll direct it to the appropriate highway department, whether it's our local one, or the village, or the county.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sarah. Anybody else? Any announcements? Okay, if not, it's the portion of the evening for public comment period. Linda, would you like to make some public comments?
Unfortunately, I'm here again for the Greg APAP business that has started up again. The smoker's going again, and I don't want this facility to run. Your zoning enforcement officer declared that you do not have the ability to have this going, as we have no food truck law. He claimed that in February 12th, 2015. And you've been working on a law, but it has not been finished. Michelle Gregg just told me that she was asked to work on the law. You did not forward the information to her that I had sent you, the six pages of comments. Now, I want that facility stopped, ceased, desisted. You have until June 30th. That's it. Not playing any games with you anymore. Seems to me that you're all colluding on this issue. I will not have that. You will do your job. You're here to enforce the laws. Your lawyer is supposed to give you the ability to do what you're supposed to do. Now, you do the right thing. You cease and desist that operation immediately. June 30th is the cutoff point. I've done my job, you do yours.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else like to make some public comments? All right. Very good. We have, our first item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the addition of roads to the Town of Red Hook 2017 inventory. Chris, did you want to say a few words about this process?
So, this is a process that's initiated by the Highway Superintendent and the Department of Transportation, and Theresa can speak to this, I think, in terms of the technical aspects of what the DRT does, but they are looking to make sure that they do a survey, right, of all of the roads in the town, and they identify places where they think there are discrepancies between their records and what's actually going on on the ground.
They're doing GIS mapping and comparing it to what we have on our records.
Right.
And if they come up with shortfalls or overages in the length, they bring it to our attention. And if we can add them by resolution, because we've been maintaining them for over 10 years, and they're deeded to us, then that's what we do to adjust, so that the figures match what DOT is now doing. It's a new technology that they're using, and they just want to make sure that the towns understand that they can increase their mileage, or decrease their mileage, depending on what the actual length of the roads are.
So Theresa and I worked together on reviewing these roads in the old, either these are roads that have been maintained for many, many years, or they're dedicated roads. In this case, I think these are all roads that were maintained for many, many years. And these are little stubs, you know, .2 miles, you know, .05 miles in one case, little spurs and stubs that weren't on the record before, and so they're proposed to be added to the record for completeness, so that they're roads she's already maintaining.
Yep. I'm going to have them up on the screen, those roads.
Could you give us more town roads and enable us to get any more help through?
They give it and they take it away. It'll probably come out to be a wash. There are some roads that were on the inventory that we may have had marked as longer, and they're actually shorter, the way that they are measuring them. So I think we'll come out to about the same. It is tied to the chips, but what they're saying is they're going through every town in the state, and it's not that you're going to be getting less money, it's just that the money will be appropriated slightly differently after all the facts and figures are in.
Okay, well, we thank you both. I know, Chris, you spent an enormous amount of time going through the deeds and Sue, her help for doing all that as well. So, any questions about these little tangents or stubs?
It comes with about 1.6 miles or something like that.
Yep. Okay, if there are no questions, it's Resolution Number 20 dated June 6. 26?
Mm-hmm.
26, dated June 20th, 2017, authorizing the addition of roads for the 2017 yearly update of the local highway inventory of roads for the New York State Department of Transportation. Now therefore be it resolved, an ISO move.
Second.
What?
Sarah, second.
Tie goes to Sarah. Okay, any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. We're going to skip number two, as I mentioned earlier, so that Megan Mung from the Estuary Program can join us. We have item number three. Our purchasing manager and coordination with our recreation director have identified that we can apply for some additional funding to our Town of Red Hook tennis courts, our complete redo project, and we've been able to ascertain that we're eligible for up to $20,000. Whether we get it or not, we'll find out after we make this application. All right. And put it up on the screen there. Did you, is John here? Oh, there he is. John, did you want to say something about the grant application?
Well, we'll go through all the requirements. There, as you know on that sheet that I gave you, there are a number of requirements. We have to do photographs, we have to have engineering studies, you have to have scope of work. We have to have a two-scale diagram, which we just completed on Monday, and then all that has to be digitalized and sent to USTA. And that'll be the first step in the process. And then we also have to have programs, which we do, and it has to be open to the public, and we have to have it open for tournaments and other uses. And we have to, in our summer program, we use Quick Start as our instructional program. Youth tennis is the big emphasis, and we would have to probably mark the court for youth tennis as well, as a USTA requirement to get the money. So you'd have to give your 30-foot courts as well as your 78s.
And just to update the board and the public, we are at the point where the engineers are now putting together a scope of services for this project, and we should hopefully have that for our next meeting. And we would like to let you know that if the project does move forward this summer, August, two weeks in August, likely the work will be done. We have that window.
Well, we have, since the school district is using it, you have August till July.
Till whenever, okay. They're going to be with Bard for the fall season then? Okay. Good. Any questions about the grant application? All right, we have Resolution Number 27 up on the magic screen. Whereas the Town of Red Hook has cause to be prepared an application to the United States Tennis Association for a grant of $20,000. And that is the maximum amount that we're eligible for, an ISO move.
Second.
There we go. Everybody is quick tonight. Any further discussion?
I just want to thank John for finding this, and I think this is a really important project, so I'm glad that we're going forward with it, and that we have managed to find a bunch of different sources of funding for something that's a pretty significant project. I think it's really great and encouraging for future rec improvements.
It's all about the grants, right?
The extra cost to us because of what they require will be more than offset with this grant, should we get it, won't we, John?
Oh, yes. For our $100 membership, we've already got over $4,000 from USTA, in nets and balls and rackets and other things, so.
Are you recommending we all join, John?
John, do you know if we, I know you said the courts have to be open for things like tournaments, can we charge for things like that? I know right now we don't, I think, charge for use of the facility, right?
It depends on the tournament. I mean, if it's a profit-making thing, usually they do, but if it's not, then they don't, so.
Like an education thing, actually.
Right.
Well, we have this resolution. It's, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Well, you heard about the clerk's report and the supervisor's report earlier. We have annually audits done on the clerk's office, on the, obviously, the town supervisor's office. The justice courts, and so Lori Dody, who is our CPA, has conducted the audits for those departments. And we have... Okay, so here's the tax collectors. I put the screen up here for the folks at home, so you can get some sense of how much money we collect. It's approximately $7.5 million, but you notice a good majority of that goes for your Duchess County taxes, the town taxes, and that includes both the folks who live in villages and those who live outside. The total is just over $3 million. And these are the audited results. And here's the justice courts. We got two judges. And this is the amount of money that is brought in by each of the courts. And the disbursements out of those courts. It's not a large sum of money, but nonetheless, we have it audited. And here's the resolution. To approve the audits of tax collector, town clerk, town justice, general fund, and the annual report. And the Town Board has had these reports in the last few weeks from the auditor. Did you have any questions? Okay, if not, this would be Resolution Number 28. Bill, so I can stop talking for a minute. Would you be kind enough to read Resolution 28?
Most resolved, the Town Board accept the audit dated June 6th, for the year ending December 31, 2016, prepared by Lori H. Dody, who's our certified public accountant. The Office of Tax Collector Financial Statements and Independent Auditors Report. The Office of Town Clerk Financial Statements and Independent Auditors Report. The Town Justice Courts Financial Statements and Independent Auditors Report. The General Fund 2016, and the Annual Report 2016. And copies have been made available to everybody. ISO move, resolution.
Thank you very much, Bill.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. And we want to thank Anne Conway for the terrific job that she does, that makes it so much easier for the auditor, and certainly for the town supervisor. And Sue McCann, we thank you for keeping those folks in order.
Millions of dollars through your hands.
That's right. So we are on item number five. This is a discussion, perhaps a resolution. It relates to a grant opportunity that the Winnicke Land Trust would like the Town of Red Hook to consider. And Greg Swansea is here, the executive director of Winnicke. He was kind enough to meet with members of the Hook Trail, which is a combination of folks from the community, the trails committee, to discuss this opportunity, and I think it's safe to say it was a favorable reaction after the meeting. And so Brenda Kegel is here with Greg to give a brief synopsis of what they're considering. Take it away. Who would like to go first, together? Let's see if we can put something on the magic screen here. And this is from our not-yet-official trails plan. Which is a document that we worked on. There is the Village to Village Trail. So Brenda, would you allow this, say a little bit about this, Greg?
Well, as you said, Greg, as the executive director of Winnicke, came to speak to our trails committee and our stakeholder group that involves those folks that were involved in our trail plan. And they just recently completed a feasibility study and planning project of the northern Duchess area, which included the towns of Red Hook, Rhinebeck, and Hyde Park. And as a result of that study, whose, Greg can speak to this better, but as a result of that study, their mission was to identify priority connections that would connect those towns. Am I saying this right, Greg?
Absolutely.
And they came up with several priority projects, and we were fortunate enough, not only to be included in the study, but also to have one of the highest priority projects located in our town. And it just so happens that it's also a project that was considered high priority as part of our trail plan, so we were really happy to hear from them, and especially that they would do the grant work, but would accept, of course, any help we could provide. You know we're working on the Village to Village Trail right now, which is a seven-plus-mile, mostly on-road trail as part of a Greenway Grant. And we will, as a result of that, will be doing some traffic calming, we're working with the county on that, we'll be doing wayfinding, signage, and installing for different kiosks. So, but it is, like I said, mostly on road, so the Sawkill Link, as we've been calling it, would present an alternative that is off-road. It would, it's a very scenic route, runs along the Sawkill. Of course, the route isn't set in stone, because as you can see, private property is involved, and it would depend, the success of the route would depend on cooperation and collaboration of the adjoining property owners. In our trail plan, we had a couple of different options. You can see the orange line starts down on Market Street by the high school, and goes up to the red line and goes west, and they all, the term of this is Aspen Wall Road. And the other option, one possible consideration, but I don't think it was in the Winnicke plan, was to enter the Sawkill Trail from Rec Park West. So of course it all depends on, you know, donations, cooperation, and how the concept is received by the landowners. So, what else do we have?
Well, a little, maybe I could give some context into where we came into it. I mean, you started with that. We had a land, a grant from the Land Trust Alliance for $25,000. We had that much left from part of a grant. The grant had also been funding a roundtable for trails in the county, so we've been working with a lot of different trail groups as a result of that roundtable, and so a natural thing to think about was a feasibility study. And so, you know, of course, we're based in Rhinebeck, and so we thought of Rhinebeck and adjoining communities, Red Hook and Hyde Park, where we have some easements, and we have, you know, we've got the nature preserve down in Hyde Park. So we thought, okay, what makes sense to start looking at a regional trail network that can connect communities together? So that's where this feasibility study came in. We interviewed a number of engineering firms, chosen, engineering was chosen, and I can tell you, they did an excellent job, especially for that amount of money. I'm really impressed with what they did. They pulled in information from organizations throughout this area that were working on trails. There was a lot of conversations that took place, and we pulled in data and so forth. We created maps, and really, if you could zoom in on the maps really far, in terms of how much information is there, so we think that'll be good resources going forward for communities that we're working with in the area, so. So anyway, we identified 19 different priority segments of trails. It wouldn't do, it wouldn't connect all the communities together, but these are the 19 that rose to the top in terms of possible, physically possible, and we looked at different parameters. So, there's, so each one of the 19 has one page, and it's a summary of things like the trail length, number of bridges needed, parcel count, number of owners, and the cost. And then more detail on another page, in an appendix, it goes into unit costing. So how much is a linear, you know, does a foot of, or a, you know, 100 feet of trail cost to build that's eight foot wide with some shoulders and with crushed stone, that kind of thing? So we've got some good prices. And for the Sawkill Trail, which is very consistent with what you see right there, because there was a lot of communication going on, it's about $1.2 million is the estimate. And there would be some additional costs to do it, but, so right now, we're in the process of, okay, how can we fund this? Some of it might be donations, but right now, we have this opportunity with the community, the consolidated funding applications, due on July 28th. Winnicke Land Trust is set up with a Grants Gateway. We can access these grants. We have experienced writing grants, managing grants, administering them, you know, and we are interested in working with projects in Red Hook, Rhinebeck, and Hyde Park. So each of the three communities, we've identified high priority projects. Here in Rhinebeck, this is the one, and we would like to, we'd like to work with you when we offer to submit the grant on behalf of, you know, all our partners to do this, and administer the grant and so forth. on behalf of all, you know, all our partners to do this and administer the grant and so forth. It would be no fiscal, no financial obligation to the, to the town to do this. What we would, we would be able to access potentially is five hundred thousand dollars in Officer Parks and Recreation Store Preservation Grant for park development and up to two hundred thousand dollars for recreational trails program money. So all of that through this process with a due date July twenty-eighth. I've been, I can tell you, I've been, I've worked for the city of Kingston for four years. It was very successful at those maximum amounts for the Kingston Green Line. If you've heard that, that project in Kingston. So I know this could be done. I've seen it get done before, and I can tell you, this, this does look like a very attractive project for a couple of reasons. It connects, it helps connect communities together, Red Hook going toward Tivoli, the Village to Village Trail that you've been working on toward. It also is protecting a, an area that has, that is, a drinking water supply for Bard. They pull their water right out of there. So we could also ensure, not only with some recreational use, but also protecting lands and working with landowners. So there are a lot of reasons that this is attractive. And so that's one reason that, obviously, that we're, as a, as a, you know, as a land trust, we are kind of inclined and to move forward on this and help connect, connect communities together if it's our mission well. And we're, we're in perpetuity. So it's something that we are able to go to a state agency and say, you know, that this is, you know, we're, it's reasonable that we would ask for the funding and reasonable that they grant it. So a stipulation is that there's a resolution, an endorsement by each municipality that we work with. So I'm working actually now with several municipalities, you could, you could imagine, in looking at, can we, can we do this? Is there support in the community? And can we, can we make this happen only, even though it's on a, fairly, it's a month and a half? I still am sure, I'm still quite confident we can get some grant proposals in by July twenty-eighth. But a contingency is a resolution from the community. They want to make sure that you're fully aware that we're looking at, applying for this funding and that it doesn't, you know, fly in the face of kind of maybe other goals that you have or, or, you know, isn't consistent with priorities that you have. I think, especially working with the Trails Committee, which has done a lot of great work. We hope that it is consistent.
Very good. And you were going to say a few things about consistency, Brenda? You had a list of things that it sort of matched in our plan? Do you?
You mean that first page you didn't show?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I was just going to say that there's been a lot of excitement about trails in the area lately. And I was going to mention that, you know, kind of started with the Upper Root and IG study. And then we had our Greenway Grant that did the trail plan. And we did get a draft final trail plan last year, which we have not formally presented to the town board yet because we're working on some formatting of it. And then I wanted to mention that Bard College also got Greenway funding to do a feasibility study on the Tivoli Bay's South, South Bay Trail. And they are working on improving the trail and establishing a link to Montgomery Place. Winnicke's good work. We dedicated the Mountain View Trail last summer. So there's a lot of stuff, a lot of good energy happening, and I hope you'll support the resolution.
And I understand there are others in the Hope Trail Committee that are looking at raising private funds as?
Yes.
As the potential match here.
Yes, and I can tell you, well, I've, knowing it's a short timeline, I started to outreach to landowners.
Okay.
And actually, so far, I haven't reached all of them yet.
Okay.
So that's why it's, it's a tricky business, isn't it?
Right.
To present projects like this and get a green light or at least a yellow light to move forward by the community in general, but also we need to look with landowners. It's their land, so.
Right.
So far, it's positive, I can tell you. I've also talked to, begin conversations with Sina Hudson, who have an easement in that area that we're talking about here, so also positive. So, so far so good, so I can say.
Okay. And that's one of the services you're offering as part of, for writing the grant? You'll also meet with the landowners and make sure they're willing landowners and so on and so forth?
A stipulation for them would be that their, the land would be, it would be an easement. If public money is, is put into a project on private land, there needs to be an easement that ensures public access.
Right.
So they, they would need to, you know.
Be willing to land.
We, we could develop an easement with them. That's, well, that's one op, you know, one option.
Right. Very good. Any questions from Sarah? I know you've been sitting in on these meetings.
I can just tell you that we, I think the people around the table seemed, the Trails Committee and other stakeholders seemed really positive about the idea of going forward with this, and I think it's great. The, the idea of planning trails regionally, I think, makes a lot of sense. Or, you know, not just one community, because we're all connected in other, many other ways besides trails. So trails is an obvious way to connect. So I'm excited that we're a part of Winnicke's plan and that we can at least try for this. If they're willing to do a lot of the heavy lifting for the grant application, then I think that's a win for us. So I'm excited to see it go forward.
Okay. Bill, anything?
No, I'm ready to pass the resolution.
Okay. All right.
I, I just have a question about what, where you have identified a route for this, for this trail. And, and you said it go along Market Street? Wouldn't go across, would it, if it started Market Street, going down Linden Avenue, and across the bridge? No? No? Where am I, where am I missing?
Well, this does call for two bridges to be installed to, so it would cross, potentially would cross at another location than Linden, if I'm, if I've got my geography correct. And then would follow on the north side of the Sawkill.
Okay.
And then cross the Sawkill.
Through the chicken farm there?
Well, and I, yes.
Okay.
Well, potentially, now, I.
I, no, I understand.
There are other conversations going on. I, for one, have not talked to the, that landowner as yet, so. And the other thing is that we would ask for design and construction money with this grant.
Mm-hmm.
So that there's, if we need to modify the design from what's conceptually done here, obviously, we'd be obliged to do that. So I think a lot of the conversations that I hope will happen between now and the end of July will really disclose, you know, firm up whether this, we're on the right track here with this, with this course.
It would be an ideal, from my, my point of view, the ideal. But I, but you want to take a lot of cooperation from a lot of people, landowners there.
Yeah.
It's about a mile, I believe, isn't it?
It's, it's about two miles.
Almost two miles.
Is it that far?
Yeah.
So just to be clear for everybody, if, if we didn't get enough buy-in from the various property owners, then we wouldn't do it. It's not this time, right? And, but passing this resolution simply says that the town's aware that this project is being proposed and that we're, like, authorizing you to, to apply for it, basically? Or, I mean, that's basically all it is, right?
It's a letter of support. Letter of support.
It's endorsing.
It's an endorsement, right, exactly. So if it falls through at this point, it falls through, but you're going to at least start checking around and figure it out.
Yes, and we're willing to take that risk that it could, but it's, it's been some good work done on it. And it's, it's an important project. If we could do it, it would be a good one, so.
And it's going to require quite a bit of work between now and the end of July. You don't want to do that unless you know that we're comfortable, provided the landowners are comfortable with, with a trail being engineered and constructed. Yeah, makes sense. Jim?
No, I think it's a great idea. I, my only thought, one, was that as part of the easement discussion, I presume we hold the landowners harmless? You know, with, for liability issues when we're having a trail easement on their land? Because I mean, that would be a big point to them, I would think.
Yeah, well, there's a, there's a statute in the state of New York for, that protects landowners when there's not a fee charge for allowing people to go through property. And I think, you know, I think, I think the community would be, the community, which include Winnicke and, and what many people in the community, would, would look at how to maintain these trails. And so it wouldn't, you know, it's not, it wouldn't be an obligation on the landowner to maintain them. But they, and they also wouldn't be liable for them.
Yeah, that, that trail's great, yeah.
Yeah, but they wouldn't be liable, and if you look at the recreational use statute, it's why a lot of rail trails exist, for example, and a lot of pathways exist in this, in this state.
We opened up that spot that a lot of people never get to see along the Sawkill there.
Yeah, you know, it'll also involve, certainly, it's right along a waterway. So it'll involve, you know, a secret process. I mean, there'll be a lot of moving parts here.
Yeah.
And so we'll back, you know, we wouldn't be back to sea, all right, on this, because you'd probably be involved in that process.
Sure.
But we are interested in protecting conservation values, same common law. Let the bike services to the people.
It's a very exciting idea, actually.
Well, that's going to come out of here, I think.
Okay. We have an endorsement resolution, which I just want to make sure I have the most current one.
Just to endorse the application?
Yeah. I just wasn't sure. Okay.
Robert, the, there are a lot of Trails Committee folks here because it's trail meeting, right? So I don't know if they have any comments?
Comments?
From the Trails?
Our dedicated Trails Committee members doing a terrific job. Are you excited about this?
Well, we've talked about this section of the trail, and, you know, it would be very nice as far as, you know, getting a part of that Village to Village. Because, you know, a lot of trails that are proposed go along highways and streets. This will be a nice scenic trail. And also, you know, since it'll be along the river there, I wondered, will, could you get any money from the DEC? Because it'll give access to fishermen along the stream there. And they might be able to come up with a few bucks.
Yeah, the DEC, yeah, there's some, there, there's several agencies for, for that or just protecting water quality too, which, if we, you know, look at the lands around it and buffering those waterways. So there, there's several options beyond just these two grants.
And I'm sure you'll get enough volunteers to maintain these trails. Seems like a really nice project.
Thank you, Bruce. I heard an offer and that.
Have my tractor.
And to your question about DEC, I think I mentioned earlier Megan Long from the DEC Estuary Program, who was here earlier for a meeting, by the way, will be back in just a little while to join us tonight. So you're welcome to quiz her on some of those funds for trail-related projects. So, okay, we have an endorsement. It's a resolution. Let's call it twenty-nine, shall we? Okay. Endorsing Winnicke Land Trust for Grants for Trail Projects. Jim, could I impose upon your vocal cords? Would you mind?
Certainly, Robert. Whereas the Winnicke Land Trust is applying to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation for grants under the Environmental Protection Fund and Recreational Trails Program for a trails project to be located in the town of Red Hook, a site located within the territorial jurisdiction of this town board as described in the correspondence on file of the town clerk. And whereas, as a requirement under the rules of these programs, said not-for-profit corporation must obtain the approval slash endorsement of the governing body of the municipality in which the project will be located. And now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Red Hook, by a fair vote of not less than a majority of all of us, hereby endorses the application of Winnicke Land Trust for grants under the Environmental Protection Fund and Recreational Trails Program for a trails project as a Sawkill Link Trail and located within this community. I so move.
Thank you very much, Jim. I will second your motion. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Greg. Thank you very much for being here twice in one day.
Yeah.
We appreciate it, Brenda, as always. Trails Committee, get some sleep. There's going to be a lot of work to do if this goes through. Thank you all. So while we, while we are on the topic of water and trails, there is a resolution in support of Clear Water Sail to D.C. as a way to highlight the need to protect our clean water and other environmental protections. We have a resolution, and this is in honor of. This is a milestone for them, right? I believe it's.
Yeah.
It's not called fifty years, but it's, it's certainly some number. I forget what it is. We have a very lengthy resolution up here.
Just go right to the resolve.
And if you haven't heard us here before, we're very nervous about what's being contemplated for the Hudson River with the barges. And it's just one of the issues that the Clear Water is going to highlight. Right now, they are in fact sailing down there. They started just a couple of days ago. So this lengthy resolution, which they prepared a draft for us to consider.
I, I happen to have, if I remember correctly, forty-some odd years ago.
You were there?
I, I was there. I, with South Street, before South Street Seaport was complete. And then, and then the Billy Clear Water came there on their way for a previous trip.
Were your diapers out, Harry?
Yeah, just found them.
Okay, on that note. So one of the things they highlight in this resolution is whereas existing federal clean water protections have recently been rolled back or are coming under threat from many quarters, including using the Congressional Review Act to undo the stream protection rule, which previously protected waterways from surface coal mining pollution. We don't have that issue here locally, but obviously, water is an issue for all of us. Using the EPA rulemaking process to repeal and replace the waters of the United States rule, which extended Clean Water Act protections to sixty percent of U.S. streams and twenty million acres of wetland. And these waters and wetlands will soon lose those protections if the rule is undone. And then they talk about cuts to, proposed cuts to the EPA, thirty-one percent. And grants for water protection programs, Great Lakes Restoration Initiative. So they're talking about nearly a billion dollars' worth of cuts that are being proposed to Office of Water Programs. So we have now therefore be it resolved that the town of Red Hook, Duchess County, New York, hereby registers its deep concern over current rollbacks and threats to federal clean water protections. As described above, affirms the need for sound, science-based water policy for adequate regulation enforcement and funding as pressure on water quality and safety continue to mount. We also wish to express our support for the effort. Clear Water is the leading to carry our concerns and concerns of many New Yorkers for clean water and other environmental protections directly to Washington. I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. So I see Megan has not yet joined us, so we will just continue on.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this Culver Grant, Kimberly had prepared it for Crawford and Associates. I had thought that she was going to come and do a presentation before the board on the results of that, that study. Is, is that going to happen?
I, I don't anticipate that it's going to happen, no, because we discussed it at a previous meeting. I don't know if you were here that meeting or not, but we went through the results, the highlights of the results. And Megan, who's familiar with the report, is actually going to be joining us in just a little bit. We could, if, if you so desire, we could have Kimberly come back. As a requirement to close out that grant, we need to go ahead and approve this tonight. But yes, certainly, we can have a full-blown presentation. We could even do that as early as next week.
Yes, I got my documents yesterday.
You did?
Yeah. So I was just, I mean, I understand what it's all about, but I didn't know if, if there was a presentation by Kimberly to the board. I wasn't here for that meeting. I didn't see it on the agenda.
There was not a presentation from her, but we did review the results of, of that report.
Of the most recent report?
Several, several weeks ago. I don't have anything updated as of yesterday, if that's what you're saying.
No, no, I'm just saying that I got the documents yesterday.
I don't know why.
And I didn't understand, you all won, that Kimberly was going to present the scope of the findings to the board.
We didn't arrange that for us tonight, but we do have Megan here to answer questions about going forward. And Megan, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, sorry about that. Sawkill game right over.
How did, how did it work out? Did you win your game or did you? How did, how did it work out? Did you win your game or did you lose?
You know, we were holding them strong up until the sixth inning and they came back with a vengeance and crushed us thirty-two to nine, so.
Well.
My team was just happy to be out of the office.
Did you? You had fun?
Yeah, we had a lot of fun.
Okay, this is a DEC team. It's nice to know that you all enjoy being with each other so much. So, um, yes, we, um, had this report a while back, um, on the culvert improvements. And then we had a meeting where we talked about, um, applying for grants. We thought we were going to apply for a grant to replace two culverts. We ultimately did not do that. A combination of concern over, um, not having a good idea of the cost of the bigger project. And the second thing was that we felt our engineers, or they felt, that there was too short a time period to make that application. And we had questions, as you know, about what would be covered with the grant funds, the design, work, so on and so forth. If we were to go out and apply for the grant, be given the money, then we go out and do an RFP, and if those numbers should be dramatically different and we decided then not to go forward, what would that mean for the monies that we've expended so far, for example? So, um, we do have a resolution to approve that, uh, plan. But before that, could you, uh, maybe come and, and tell us who you are, say a few words about, um, the project, um, that we're signing off on and also grant opportunities going forward?
Sure. Um, so can everyone hear me back there?
Yeah, so there's a mic right here if you want.
Oh, man.
That's okay. Don't worry about it.
This is stressful.
You sound a little bit clear with that, without it.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so my name's Megan Lung. I'm an environmental analyst with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Hudson River Estuary Program. Um, also, I'm with NEWEPIK, the New England Interstate Water Pollution Control Commission. And now that I've seen all of your faces and I've said that whole mouthful, I will never say that ever again, because it is a tedious thing to say. But I work with my supervisor on aquatic barrier projects, so dams, culverts, bridges. Primarily, my field work includes surveying culverts, similar to the work that was done here in 2013 through Dutchess County Soil and Water. And then the next steps and what I've been focusing on is working with communities to get that data out of a database and get it in the hands of local decision-makers, so where we can identify, um, A, which crossings are the most detrimental to, um, fish and organism passage. So mostly at the estuary program, we focus on herring and eel, our bread and butter species that we adore. But we also look at turtles, salamanders. Certainly, when I'm out in the field, my number one indicator that there is a problematic culvert or, um, bridge nearby is that there are unfortunately little dead turtles lining the road. And then the second part of our project with some of the data that we take, we send it to, um, Cornell University and they do a core scale GIS-based modeling. So we try to assume, looking at just the one culvert, what is the, um, what storm size can it accommodate before it ups and overtops the road? So it's really core scale, but we're hoping to assist communities in filtering out, um, out of, say, a hundred crossings, what are the problematic twenty, or in this case, what were the top ten? Um, so the town got a grant through the estuary program, through the DEC Grants Gateway, so it was a state grant, to evaluate some data that was collected in 2013 and in 2015 by Dutchess County Soil and Water. It also had, um, results from Cornell University, so that core scale hydraulic bottling. And the purpose of the grant was to look at the data, filter out, A, which crossings is the town responsible for? And B, what are the town's top ten flooding concerns that also link up with the estuary program's, um, aquatic organism concerns? So through the protocol that we use, it's called the North Atlantic Aquatic Connectivity Collaborative. That's another mouthful, so I'll just call it NAC from now on. Um, but this is a free database that, um, we follow, thirteen other, um, other North Atlantic states are following it from Maine to West Virginia. So that data is all stored there. You guys can look at it anytime, and indeed, if new crossings are added. Um, so the grant was to go through all these crossings, figure out what is the town's responsibility, what are town priorities, what are estuary program priorities, and then look at what are some costs of mitigating these crossings? So keep looking at what kind of permits would be in mind, what are some potential structures, what are the, what's the initial, um, estimate upfront investment? It's definitely better, larger crossings that are also, um, accommodate floodwaters and are more organism-friendly are investment to communities. Um, so that's why we hope to offset that cost with grant programs. So I think, does that, does that kinda cover the awesome?
And just to remind the folks at home that we had identified, the report identified three culverts having severe barriers. When we looked at those culverts, um, we identified two that we thought were worthy of applying for grant monies.
Yeah.
And then ultimately, um, we did not apply for, for the grant. So can you now tell us when the next round is expected? And also perhaps answer some of those questions related to design work and so on and so forth?
Sure. Um, unfortunately, I'm not able to say for, for sure that the grants will be available, um, because I don't wanna get any hopes up. But we do anticipate being able to offer, um, grants either through the DEC Grants Gateway, um, or through my organization, NEWEPIK. We hope to be able to offer those on an annual basis, so hopefully around next March, we'll see something come out. I can't promise that, but that is what we are hoping for and indeed what we're expecting. Um, for the grant that closed, and I believe that one closed in April through NEWEPIK, and I should clarify that depending on the funding source, um, I know the DEC Grants Gateway, or DEC Grants do require a match. NEWEPIK grants do not. Um, so that's something to keep in mind when looking at sources. So for the one, the, the track that we're hoping to get communities on, um, for the entire estuary watershed, is what we're trying to assess is first inventory the crossings. So Red Hook in this case already had an inventory. Our second step is to prioritize crossings within that inventory. So this is similar to what you guys did. We're hoping to do that on like a large scale. So for the entirety of the town's crossings, um, we would have a document or a book, something physical that people could access where we have a replacement plan. We have estimate costs for, um, crossings within the town. And then the third step before actual mitigation is, um, getting a hundred percent shovel-ready engineering design plan. So those are kind of our three steps that we're hoping to move communities forward with potential, um, funding opportunities that I can't guarantee, but we really are hoping to offer those on an annual basis.
So if we identified, which we did, two of those three severe barriers, because we know that the ones that are rated severe are the ones that are going to merit the attention of the grant funders. You would recommend that at first we just apply for design monies or, or go further than that, maybe?
Um, it depends on what the spirit of the grant is.
Okay.
Some of the grants, like the big, um, million-dollar aquatic barrier one that closed, I believe that one would have funded both design and, um, construction. Um, some of them only fo, only fund, um, designing, some are, I think most, for most grants, if they're funding mitigation, I think there can be a case to be made within, depending on the spirit of the grant. Like if it doesn't say no, it's probably game.
So we actually heard that it wouldn't fund the design. So we would really appreciate any clarification on that, if we could get somebody to the department.
Right, for, this was the, this was the DEC grant?
Mm-hmm. The one that we, we know they helped.
The big one, okay.
The big one, the million-dollar one. So if we could get it, some clarification,
Right.
preferably in writing, because that's the kind of thing that we.
Right, I can check, I can check back on that.
Okay.
The only reason I know the NEWEPIK grant, um, so well is because I wrote it. So I spent, spent a very, I spent a nice winter with that grant and all the writing. So that's why I'm so intimately familiar with that.
And that one does or does not include the design?
The, the NEWEPIK one that closed, um, was for design work. That one was not for mitigation or actual construction. I think the DEC one, um, was looking for construction. So when those become available, um, I, once they become available, obviously, for the sake of competitiveness and fairness, I'm not able to, um, I can't walk you, walk individuals through, oh, this would be a good project or this would not be. But certainly, when they come out, we will absolutely notify everyone, we'll notify our partners, because we want to get good projects. We wanna help communities start getting some things in the ground.
And I'm sorry, if I missed it, NEWEPIK, you were also expecting next year sometime in the beginning? Okay.
I'm looking for wood, but.
Okay.
Not got a chair.
No, you will not find any one of these chairs.
Blast open for the door then, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, I can't, we can't guarantee it. We'd like to see it. We hope to see it, um, because this is something that, you know, we have a goal by 2020 to assess fifty percent of the watershed. So we're running out of assessments to do, so we want communities to be in a place to, um, start mitigating some of these barriers and especially making them more resilient to, um, flooding concerns.
Okay. And so on the, on the second question, if we were to go out to bid on a project, a construction project, with either one of these two grant opportunities, and then the bid comes in outrageously different than the grant that we applied for.
Right.
The grant amount. What happens then if we've expended some funds and it just doesn't look like a financially feasible thing for us? We can come back to those organizations and ask for more money? We can forego the opportunity? Help me here.
Right. I'm gonna answer as best I can. I will follow up with Susan Pepe, who is our grant officer. She is magical. If anyone has had the opportunity to work with Susan. What I would guess is that if something came in outrageously high, I would hope that there would also be like a spread. So you're always going to get one that's outrageously low, or outrageously high, one that's suspiciously low. So I would hope that wouldn't happen, but in the event that that would happen, I would defer to Susan. So I can check back with her in like the hypothetical, like what happens if you guys go up to bid with, um, a firm either to design or to do mitigation, just comes back like completely out of the budget or out of scope?
Okay.
I would hope that wouldn't happen. Um, most, um, I'd like to think that most, um, organizations are pretty clear about reading and meeting expectations and not shooting for something that's drastically, A, out of the scope of the budget or outside of, um, what's expected or the median cost.
Sometimes with these projects, as I think there was one community in eastern Dutchess, um, around Acrum, Ankrum area.
Oh, yes.
That one where they thought it was gonna cost X amount of dollars and it ended up costing a lot more?
Yeah, so Ankrum was an interesting case. I wish my supervisor was here. He, um, is the project manager on that particular grant. But for Ankrum, they received a grant in twenty, I believe twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, they received a grant for two hundred and twen, I think two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, which, um, Colleen Lutz was the main contact on that. So I can absolutely put you guys in contact with her information, her experience going through it. But, um, in the scope of their town budget, um, she did a really nice job of displaying like what is Ankrum's annual highway budget versus what the grant was. I believe that was a twenty-five percent match. So for Ankrum, it turned out that they were able to design three culverts and replace two. They replaced one last summer. They'll be doing another one this summer for less than the price of one culvert. So there was like a match on the community's behalf, um, but in scope of it's available for them, it turned, the grant turned out to be advantageous, especially in getting some of that design work done. But I think what Andrew and I are seeing, Andrew Meyer is my supervisor, we're seeing that for, all of a sudden done designing and replacing, um, complicated crossings, we're looking at, I think, about a hundred grand apiece.
Okay.
Is what we're hoping for. And certainly some are less complicated that require less permitting. But yeah, if you guys have any questions, like definitely keep me in the loop. We're here to help. I wanna get out with a hard hat as much as you all do.
Well, it sounds like we have plenty of time to prepare. We, we were under the duck for time frame. Oftentimes, we're able to pull it off. We weren't this time.
Yeah, gra, grants are definitely a lot of hurry up and wait. But with having the, adopting this prioritization plan, you have your top ten candidates that, um, first of all, their flooding concerns for the community, for the town. They're ones that you guys need to replace or desire to replace anyway. They're also biologically sound as far as we're concerned, according to those max scores and the performance of the American eel within the Sauk Hill watershed. So when the next opportunity opens, you guys are ahead of the game, because you ha, you've already looked at it, you've got candidates in mind. Like you said, you have your top two, those severe barriers, and I think both of those are under a five-year storm of capacity. Is that right? I have to double check, but.
I, I don't know. Teresa, do you know of the document? I, I don't know.
No, as I said, I, I didn't get time to review the papers.
Okay. I can probably check and like look up on that, but I'm pretty sure if they got, if they floated to the top, um, biologically, they also tend to be, um, flooding hazards as well.
Okay.
But yeah, it's exciting. So we hope to get more communities on track with what Red Hook is doing in terms of reviewing the data, making the data useful to you all. And any feedback you have on that is excellent for us as well.
Okay. Um, does anybody else have questions for Megan?
Thank you.
No?
Thank you all.
Teresa, anything?
Nope.
Okay. So to close out the grant, and we certainly could ask Kimberly if she'd like to come through a full-blown report that was that ninety-page digital document that you were sent, uh, last week or so. The final version of that. We have a resolution, I believe it's number thirty-one. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, Sarah, could I impose upon you to read thirty-one?
Sure. Um, so this is a resolution accepting a report regarding prioritization of culvert improvements for the Sauk Hill watershed. Whereas the town of Red Hook received, received a grant from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, DEC Hudson River Estuary Program for funding to conduct a project to study certain watersheds. And whereas Crawford and Associates Engineering completed the prioritization of culvert improvements study dated April two thousand seventeen, now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Red Hook hereby accepts the Sauk Hill study for the Sauk Hill watershed.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much, Megan. As always, thank you twice in one day.
I know, it's a treat.
We're doing a lot of, uh, work with, uh, the state DEC in particular. We have, I think, three grants now that are intersecting with DEC, working concurrently. And we really appreciate your expertise and your assistance in this work, Newick.
And it's exciting. We really appreciate, um, communities that are willing to, to work with us and to, um, not take chances, but get out there and get ahead of everybody. So we really appreciate all of you. Wouldn't be able to do the work without our partner.
Thank you, Megan. Appreciate it. Okay. Very good. Um, we are moving on to lucky number seven on the agenda, and that is reorganization. Um, we have a couple of resignations. We're starting to report, uh, Michael Collegio. He is writing to let us know that he needs to step down from the CAC in order to pursue, uh, this thing called college, I think it is. So we perfectly understand him. We thank him for his service and I have, uh, a good feeling we'll get him back when he has more time to, uh, to dedicate. And so, uh, there will be, or is, a vacancy on the Conservation Advisory, um, Council. If someone at home is interested in joining that, please, uh, send a letter of interest to our town perks, Sue McHann, at redhook.org. You can get our email address on the website. Uh, we also have a resignation from Charlie Lang. Charlie, who was on our planning board for thirteen years, as you know, was, um, elected a village trustee after moving into the village from the township a little while back. And, um, he's recognizing that he can't juggle everything. And so, um, we wanna thank him for his, uh, longstanding and terrific service on the planning board. And we, um, I was in touch with Christine Kane, our chair, and, um, she thinks we should go ahead this evening and appoint our alternate, so that we don't have issues or quorums, um, to.
Point him alternate, right?
I'm sorry?
Point Charlie Lang alternate.
Well, that, that too, that as well, yeah. So Charlie is willing to stay on as an alternate.
Do we have anybody else?
So we can call him in. Well, we have our alternate, Bill Hamel, and so, um.
He did sit in on the most recent meeting, I think. They've had to call him.
Bill, Bill has actually been in the last several meetings, yeah. And.
They can alternate?
Yeah, so there's one for Charlie, if we want to.
Yeah.
And then there's one for Bill. Bill's right here.
Right. So my suggestion.
We can appoint Charlie tonight.
Right. My suggestion is that we, um, now that there is a vacancy, um, from Charlie in the, uh, term that ends twenty twenty-three, that we appoint Bill Hamel, who's been our alternate for several meetings now, a few months, and has attended every meeting, um, that we appoint him to fill that vacancy. And, uh, Christina Kane is okay with that? And so I would so love that we do that.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? This is for term, finishing a term ending in twenty twenty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. And then we now have, uh, two vacancies for the alternate. And so I would propose that we, we have two terms here. So let's do, um, the, uh, Bill Hamel alternate period, which ends twenty eighteen for Charlie Lang, because I think this is gonna be a temporary appointment for him. But a helpful one nonetheless for the planning board, because he has been involved in some longstanding projects. So I would, uh, make a motion that we appoint Charlie Lang as an alternate for the term that, uh, William Hamel had, and that is, uh, ending in twenty- for the term that uh William Hamel had, and that is uh ending in twenty eighteen. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. So that's all I have for uh the reorganization.
Basically, switch positions.
Tonight, yep, they've traded places, as they say.
Yes, traded places.
All right, um we did not get to last month's um boards and committee reports because we had um a lengthy um agenda item that meeting, and so um we are doing it this evening, so that's item number eight on the agenda. And speaking of planning board, we have a planning board report up on the screen, and Jim, if you'd be kind enough to uh to read that, that would be great.
Planning board report, May two thousand seventeen. Uh, the board met twice in May, the board commenced to continue to review the following applications: a minor subdivision application to create two parcels, two point one six acres at five point nine from eight point oh six parcel in the R one point five zoning district. A special permit renewal of the Bard College master plan. An application to revise and approve site plan for the two forty fifty square foot storage buildings to one three thousand square foot storage building and a six hundred eighty-four square foot garage, countryside storage and mental site plan. And an application for the amended site plan for a change of business use, um Rhinebeck Party rental amended site plan. That's where the stove place was in Upper Red Hook there. The gr- the board granted the approval to the application for the lot nine alteration combined with an application for a special permit for a driveway through a state-protected freshwater wetland in the Ag Business District. And that's the extent of the report for the month of uh.
Okay, thank you very much, Jim. I don't believe we have a CBA report, although I thought there was once submitted. Why don't we uh switch to?
I wasn't here for the last needs, and I only have one item before to take.
Well, why don't we search for that? Sarah, on the living board? What's that?
What do you live, which one you live in board?
A ZBA, I don't, I don't know that it's.
It met last Wednesday, and I haven't yet reported it.
I, I thought Anne submitted something, but we can, we can catch it at next week's meeting. Um, we do have a monthly dog control report. Sarah, if you'd be kind enough just to summarize?
Yeah, sure, so people can see up on the screen, but um there were seven loose dog or related incidents in April, and that was all that was reported. Um, so certainly dog incidents are the highest amount of type of incident that gets reported, and with the weather being nicer, there is a significant uptick in those kinds of incidents. And I just want to recognize that this, the DCS PCA is our dog control um office of, of record, and we um thank them for responding to all kinds of calls, and as far as I know, they've been very prompt in their um response time. Um, and we get notes on all the special and interesting kinds of things that they deal with. Um, so the information for how to find them is on our website, or you can call the town clerk's office and they can direct you where to call. And please do keep your dogs leashed, keep them within your fencing if at all possible. Promptly find them if they're loose, that's a, a big help to everybody.
Very good, thank you very much, Sarah. Um, Jim, there's the building and zoning report, a lengthy one, if you could just summarize for us?
Yes, the month report for the May of two thousand seventeen, twenty-five permits were issued, thirty-four inspections, fifteen COCCs, and a total revenue of eight thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars.
Very good.
I'd give this a synopsis.
And um this is largely alteration work that's being done on uh properties in town. Okay, Bill, we have a police department report.
Well, for the month of uh May, there were uh total incidents for reporting period were fifty-seven that were addressed by the uh police department. Their total arrests were twelve, and tickets issued during the period were fifty-five.
Okay. Very good. Jim, we have a water district report. If you would like to summarize?
Yes. The water pumped, this is uh the May eighteenth work session report, so it's the April report that was developed at their May eighteenth work session. Water pumped seventy-seven thousand gallons uh are normal, and in April of this year, we pumped seventy-four thousand gallons. Um, the wells are running, uh running fine, the well monitoring update as part of the pump control updates is still being done on well number two. Pump volumes, well number one pumps two hundred and thirty gallons a minute, and well number two pumps two hundred and forty gallons a minute, so they're both still yielding very well. The normal tests, the coliform turbidity chlorine, everything are all fine. Uh, let me see, the filtrations, all the filters are working fine, they keep the spare filters, they have the, plenty of uh chlorine on hand. Now, they've uh, as far as discussed projects and so forth, they've discussed street valve operation schedule for two thousand seventeen. Uh, the wall control, that's the ongoing circuit breaker problem that they're working to develop a solution for. They've asked Crawford Associates for a proposal to review and make recommendations for updates to include considerations for replacing the current configuration with variable frequency drive controls. Uh, the reason for that is uh would be quite a savings, you know, rather than the pumps going at full bore all the time, which is a newer way they often look to do that. They got a water plant assessment um update, doing an estimate of forty-five hundred. Uh, they received a draft proposal, bring a view for a total cost of thirty-eight, you know, for pump house facility reviews. Uh, they're gonna rotate the pump and the storage shed, our, our operator BRI will do that. Meter replacement ninety-two man a road, and water storage standpipe inspection request for proposal was mailed out on the twenty-second. So that, that the major work item list for the year would be the, the water tank inspection, and they've sent out the RFPs as we just learned. And the well number two rehab has been post-downed in two thousand eighteen. We know, if you recall, the one, number, number one was done and actually done again, and it's been fine since then, and two is still operating. But it was suggested or recommended that we rehab that in the not-too-distant future. The Ross valve inspection and repair was completed in January, and fence repair at the water tower is waiting for return call from the fencing people.
Very good.
And that's the extent of that.
Thank you very much, Jim. And, and while we're discussing water board, you know, there's that um two billion dollars that that was announced several months ago for water infrastructure, and it looks like our water tank, which we know that we're gonna have to do something with in the near future, may be eligible for some of those funds, so we're going to uh have a little get-together and see what, when, and how we might uh apply for some of those monies for our water district. So just to let you know, that's something.
To re- to repaint the inside of it?
Well, that's either to repaint or to put a new one. The reason being is that uh sometimes it's, it's just better to put a new one than to repaint the old one, and the cost isn't all that different. So, all right, good. Um, Bill, we have a, a brief task force report?
Well, weekly meetings in May, April, and May, the task force continued to review proposed language to amend the current zoning law regarding signs in Tannaretta and the proposed law, uh zoning law regarding solar energy in the Tannaretta. And the task force also reviewed revisions by Green Planning to the proposed Hamlet Business District adjacent to the Hamlet of Upper Red Hook in a draft that was dated five-two of seventeen.
Okay, thank you. Harry, we have a rec uh commission report, if you'd be kind enough to summarize it, please.
In a little of a, of a, an hour and a half talk. The, the, the basic uh report covers, covers everything that's been done to get the program, the uh recreation uh uh facilities operational for this year, and, and various programs, staffed and, and moving along. Uh, Jen Norris will, will run the summer program for the, uh summer playground program for the young kids. Um, the, the rec, the facilities have, are all up and working and in good condition. There's been an effort to try and determine what needs to be done to rebuild uh the, the tennis court. There is a recycling, um containers are now have been installed, and uh the trees that, that were getting the point of being dangerous in this, in the uh playground area have been taken down. Um, there are a number of, of uh maintenance issues that will continue some through the summer. But, but what had to be done to get, to get the programs going this summer are complete, and they're ready to start. Good sign up so far. Almost all, all the signups are complete.
Very good. Thank you, Harry, and just to remind the folks at home, we're looking at several uh upgrades to our rec facility. One is a multi-year build-out of the new rec annex land on the western side of Linden Avenue where the trail is right now. And we're also uh looking at upgrading the play equipment, and we've had several meetings, Sarah's been a part of that. And uh so we hope to have something um for the town board to take a look at, you know, perhaps in the next month or so. Is that a reasonable expectation?
Yeah, I think that's right. Yeah, we're just sort of uh going over a, a proposed plan, making some changes and suggestions, and it's just sort of a sketch out of what we could accomplish in the playground area, and then we'll have to figure out, you know, how, what it would cost in the funding and all that, so it'll definitely take some time, but.
Okay.
One other thing I just wanna mention, since it is summer rec season, that we do have a new rec playground director, Jen Norris, who's also a village trustee, and I think everybody is really excited about Jen coming on board, and I know she's already put a lot of really great Facebook posts out letting people know like who's on staff this year and what kinds of things are planned, including um some opportunities for kids who have some, you know, like sensi- sensory sensitivities, which I think is so great. The rec program tends to be, as you might imagine, very kind of loud, boisterous play, which is wonderful, but not everybody is into that. And so Jen is kind of thinking outside of our typical rec box, and also um has a lot more posts about like arts and crafts opportunities and things like that. So it looks like it's gonna be a really exciting year, and although we already had our official signups, it's not too late. If you wanna participate, you should, you know, download the forums and comment and, and sign your kids up.
Okay, thank you very much, Sarah. Um, we are finished with our board and committee reports as far as I can tell. We do have a little bit of correspondence. The first item is a letter from our Congressman John Fazzo, and he talks, he writes to us to talk about the proposed Anchorage is along the Hudson River and how his office has crafted um a bill, HR two-five-one-eight, which opposes a six-month time limit for the Coast Guard to submit to Congress a detailed summary of the public comments it has collected related to its proposed ten Anchorage sites for barges between Yonkers and Kingston. The report must also include the Coast Guard's analysis of these concerns. None of the proposed Anchoragees may be established during this time, so it's um a moratorium bill essentially that he has for a short period of time. And um he goes on to say that he believes protecting the Hudson and its adjacent communities is a critical issue. Um, the second item, uh correspondence, is something that um I shared with you uh a few weeks ago, which is Verizon through one of its uh agents, uh engineering firm, is interested in a potential lease with us here at this facility for a small cell antenna, um and following up with them. Um, they are either interested in putting something on the highway garage roof, or um they even identified the salt shed, which wouldn't be an appropriate place, especially if that's not going to be there for twenty or thirty years. Um, they are interested in the lease, the amount of which is um quite nominal, so it's something that we're going to have to consider uh moving forward, um whether, whether or not we're interested, but they would like to place it on uh the town hall campus property here. So that's all I have. Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just found the tree commission report.
Oh.
Should I, I, I'm sorry that I wasn't looking at it when you.
That's okay, I may have skipped over it. Go ahead, Sarah, would you like to read it?
Yeah, yeah, I can do it, or if, if Linda, who's the secretary of that committee, feels like.
I don't have that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm the minute, so yeah.
Okay, then I'll, I'll just, I'll try, yeah, I'll do my best, and then you tell me if there's something I missed. This is from April, so it also may not be the most up to date. Um, but uh four town tree committee members and one village green member attended the Tree City recognition ceremony in Albany. And we are going on eleven years, eleven years as a tree city, so that's exciting. Um, there was a spring tree planting, uh which happened around Arbor Day, right? Um, and then Arbor Day celebration was a big hit, and the library was there. There was tree climbing gear demonstrated and knot tying, hands-on activities, raffle basket, poster contest winners, a luncheon for the volunteers, tree plant, uh trees available for planting, like, um like free, what are they called?
Seedlings.
Seedlings, thank you. Um, pruning has begun at the north end of the rec park. Um, did the Centennial tree get planted at Treble's Garage yet?
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause this is a, this is a strip park.
There's three trees there.
Yeah, okay, three trees there. Um.
And they're all doing well.
And I know that already the uh, the Mill Road Tree Educational Program went forward, Eleanor did that, right, Eleanor Fryery, and that was a big hit. I know my son participated, he said.
He just did a mild blitz with Nancy Gusky too.
Okay, and Nancy Gusky also did some, and my son, the first grader, reported it was too short, so we want more, more tree education, so according to the first graders, but so seems like you guys are very busy. I know this is your busy season really, so we'll have a more updated report next time maybe.
And most importantly, the uh people gave us donations, two hundred and sixty-five dollars.
That's right, two hundred and sixty-five dollars worth of, of donations from the community, which is wonderful. And we'll just go into more, yeah, yeah, and tree.
Additional money for, for trees.
Yeah, great.
Absolutely, thank you very much, Linda, thank you very much, Sarah. Okay, we are at that point of the evening. Um, any further public comments?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll be keeling again. Um, this is on a different topic. A community member approached me and inquired as to why dogs that were supposed to be euthanized by the Order of Judge Trebois are, are being buried from one place to the other, and we're paying for this. If they're supposed to be euthanized, they should be euthanized.
So Linda, I can answer the question because the order was appealed and is on appeal, and the appeal is gonna be heard on Thursday. All this time, it's never appealed to the health division, it takes that long for issues to get before the court, I'm afraid to say.
So the town has to pay for this all the time? Can we get the money back?
Justice is what justice is. We have to prove, you know, the matter, and uh so it's going through the court system, that's where we are right now. Okay, yeah, sorry to say, but that's where we are.
Trust us, if we, if we could do something about it, we, we would, we would. Nobody, nobody wants to be moving dogs around or and, and I'll just clarify that the dogs were only moved one time, um to, you know, they were kind of in an initial spot that would not have been good for them to be held long-term, and we saw, once the appeal went forward, that we would need to have them in a place that was, you know, suitable for months and months of potential.
Every so often, we should say to the public that we do have a leash law, you have to control your dog, and if your dog bites someone or injure, you're responsible for that.
Well, I did try to say it earlier, maybe it wasn't clear enough, but we do need to keep our dogs.
I think you have to.
Yeah, I know, you, you, yep, you have to keep the dogs leashed and, and obedient and within their fencing, and that's for your protection as much as for everybody else's, and so important, absolutely.
Because nasty things could happen to people and that's.
Absolutely, and even, and even by accident, you know, like one of the reports from the dog control officer was a golden retriever charged somebody's tow- a golden retriever charged somebody's toddler at a, at a park, you know, I mean, who knows, you know, golden retrievers are very friendly, but you can see how that would be scary for people, you know, I mean, so even if your dog isn't, you know, malicious, it's still, you know, it's a public issue.
I have a question. Does, is the dog park still operating?
It does still operate, although we are um kind of in discussion with Rhinebeck cause I think they're not totally happy with how it is right now. It's just kind of difficult to monitor, so um we'll see. We'll have an update soon, I think, on whether it's gonna continue. But it does still exist. There is a dog park. Maybe people don't know. There's a dog park over by Old Stone Church Road, right?
Stone Church.
Sort of Stone Church Road.
Yep.
That we share with Rhinebeck.
Yep.
You can get permits through Sue McCann, right?
Uh, no, actually, you get the permit in Rhinebeck.
In Rhinebeck, okay.
Excuse me, I have the application.
So Sue has the application and then the permits through Rhinebeck.
And they have to have a valid dog license.
Right.
And you should be licensing your dog every year.
Oh, that's a valid dog license.
Just to get a license, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, at this time, that's all I have. If uh no one has anything else, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the hiring of a particular individual. Is there a second? Okay. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So thank you all. Thank you all for watching.